All right, we'll go ahead and start our meeting here. In accordance with North Carolina Statute of 18B-201, does anyone have or know of any conflict of interest with items coming before the board today?
I hear.
All right, approve of the minutes. From last month.
I've got all of the minutes. I'll approve them.
Uh huh, check it.
Minutes.
That's a big deal.
Yeah.
We'll have just then.
Hi there. How are you?
Hey.
You got town council representatives with us here today. Glad to have you. Your board is, I guess that'd be a list here. But welcome. Glad to have you. I've not been on this year, I don't know if that many years, but this first time we've ever had visitors, so glad to have you with us. All right, we'll go over the months ourselves.
Yeah, let's go ahead and we can let them.
Let's just go and let them put into their thing.
Okay. All right, okay. Does anybody have any questions about what goes on here? What stores running or?
Well, that's part of why the council asked me to arrange this meeting, because there were some questions based on some of the sales reports and things that were pulled from the state. The town of Franklin's been receiving a flat rate every year as opposed to a percentage which is reported on the website. It says we're supposed to receive eighty-eight percent of the profit, and it's been a flat rate, either fifty thousand or seventy thousand since nineteen ninety-three. According to the reports from the state, there are other municipalities and counties who receive fewer in sales, but give more money back to those municipalities and counties. According to your last audit report, you've got plenty of money in the bank, and you're covering your operating expenses before the distributions are made back to the county, to the police, and to alcoholic education. So part of what the council has asked is, who set a set rate? Is there some sort of local agreement in place? Or where does that money come from? Why is it a flat rate rather than a percentage that alternates? Like, the law for the five percent has changed over the years, based on the profit. So that's one of the questions.
I'm on, they'll put on here less than time than I have. So here's the man that has been here ever since, he's been the manager ever since ABC Store opened. He can give you more of the history than either one of us can.
And I will clarify that I've been in a municipality where there was a local agreement in place that said they would accept a certain amount of flat rate because they had some debt service that they had to pay off. But I've also worked for municipalities where it's stayed the way that it's listed in the statute, that the percentage is based on the net profit.
It's nice that you've dealt with some of that.
When we first opened up back in ninety-four, the profit distribution fluctuated because of our costs that we were having just to get initialized and started. It did. CPA that we'd been using, which has been CPA that is used by eight other ABC boards in the state, they're based out of Asheville, it's called Smith, Melissa and Gray. And they have basically, they, the lady that does our audit for all these years has said that every one of the ABC boards that she does, it is a set figure. Not disputing what you said, that there is a fluctuation or more, or whatever can be given by two other municipalities, like you said. We do understand that. I did ask her whenever you requested this meeting, what she suggested. I said, why are we on this set figure? And she said, that's basically, and I'm sure you're aware ma'am, that according to law, that if we give you the X amount of dollars, and then we have gross profit that exceeds that, then by law, we have to give you that money. You know, I mean, yeah, I guess we could be like a neighboring ABC boy that just got in trouble about that and hold it back, but we've not done that. And we've had, we haven't made an extra distribution here or there, not much, but a couple thousand dollars that we have. But I asked her if we could give more based upon our profit ratio, and she says that we'd strap us for cash at times, but we definitely could do that. She says that she thinks it would be a great idea to have in writing an agreement that we've had with whatever we're going to give. And I do feel, you know, the reason we never did do that, at the time, it was Bob Moore, Pacatillo, and Russell Bolton that was on board at that time. And I don't know why we never had nothing in agreement. I don't know, the town never did ask for it, and we never did push it or know to say anything about it, honestly. So we've just been, you know.
Status quo.
Status quo, moving on, just like we have with that same figure. Never, never behind, never late. Could we give more? As far as the money that you may be speaking of, if we have put aside or have in excess, we have to meet a working capital by law. And other than that, she said, CPA says that, you know, we, the reason is fine if that's what the town of Franklin would like, but she says there needs to be an understanding, whether it be verbally or in writing, that if we become strapped, and you're saying, why strapped? Could they, well, do we need to remodel? Or does heating and air need to go out? Or does our forklift blow up?
Computers, computers, the programs.
Does that count? Yes, because we have had no help in twenty-seven years. I mean, we've done it all. So, and that's no reflection, please understand, it's no reflection back on the town. None, none. It's just that we've done our own, you know. Basically, what we thought when we started in ninety-four is you take on responsibility and you do it to the best that you can. And, you know, I know there are other ABC boards around us that have needed help, and their governing bodies has helped them somewhat, whether it be reduce their payments, or, you know, purchase this for them, or allow them to do this. But for us, we never really went down that road. But we can look at giving you more money. If you're wanting to know a figure, I guess Mr. Jameson might. He is, our two biggest components for, is our overhead. I mean, that is our two biggest components, you know, for being strapped. I don't want to say financially strapped, I mean, yes, we have to watch our PZQs, just like any government body does. But we, our biggest component is our insurance salaries, and then, of course, our lease.
And how much longer do you have on the lease for this thing?
It expires November twenty-twenty-three. That will end a five-year term.
So we've got a little over a year, year left on.
Usually, we have done a three-year lease ever since we've been at the shopping center since ninety-four. And that's just basically what the shopping center wanted to do. And so we did a three-year lease every time up until this last one. And the reason we did five is the board members at that time wanted me to try to negotiate with property manager, leasing agent, to see if we could reduce the rent or keep it down over a longer period of time, because it seemed to always be going up. So with this five-year lease, it increased over the previous three-year lease, two percent.
Okay. And does it increase every year?
Well, it could, yeah. When we negotiate, it has, yes ma'am, to answer your question, it has increased.
For the life of the lease.
For the life of the lease, yes, correct. But for the last three-year lease we had before we started this five-year lease we're on now, the rate increase was only two percent for five years, which is very minimal, but it's still high.
Is it based on your square foot?
Sir?
Is it based on the square footage of your space?
Yeah, we're at sixty-five hundred square feet. Yes. We started out down at the very end, well, you can't really go down there and look at shoe sensation now, because that's a big building. It was split in half. And it used to be a restaurant, a Chinese restaurant there besides, well, we only had thirty-two hundred square feet, and we outgrew that in a matter of two years. You know, we couldn't keep the liquor to get to the customer, so we just didn't have no place to put it.
So it costs how much per month or per year now for your lease?
Our monthly payments?
Yeah.
Nine thousand dollars.
Nine thousand dollars a month.
Nine thousand one hundred.
I don't know what that is for foot, that's.
I can figure that out and get back to you about that.
That's okay, I'm sorry about that. I just wondered, that's the going rate, I don't know.
It is, it is the rate that you're talking, I understand what you're saying now. There are shopping centers that were struggling, such as the old Walmart location, but now that Ingles has taken that over. But before that, when they were trying to get businesses to go into those empty spaces up there, those smaller spaces, they reduced the square footage rent. And the board at the time didn't want to look into going into that because they were having roof problems, and, I mean, it was, so now that you can basically see that, that's why they're gutting all that structure up there and starting from scratch. But it's, you know, you can find some, Mr. Gregory, I hear at Kmart, we talked to him just briefly, and he was within a dollar or so on the square footage price.
Which would be a tremendous cost for us right now, for us to relocate. Because you'd have to double everything that you've got, you can't shut down one day and open back up the next.
We had to ask Mr. Mason to negotiate with him, it would even be higher than it is today.
Yeah, I basically overstepped my bounds. I said, the town is ready to move us out of here. And I knew y'all didn't have a place. I knew that too. But, I mean, I didn't have anything to go on, they were ready to just. So I said, if you're wanting to keep us well and good, and let's look at a five-year term. If not, go ahead, and you can jack that thing up for three years, and we'll be gone. And they said, well, we'll do a five-year lease. And then they came at this figure, I come back, and so it ended up with a two.
There was a lot of discussion there a while back about building your own building. And that kind of went by the wayside for whatever reason I wouldn't preface all that conversation.
We couldn't get the loan.
Couldn't get the loan.
We couldn't get, it was a loan through the state, some of the other things, you know, like the, for the town finances, through that entity, and we lost out being able to get a loan, and so we didn't go through with that.
Pretty expensive, I guess.
Yes.
It was, and then, you know, the prices of land now, just getting a parcel of land, we, the most recent parcel of land that we looked at is out there at Sawmill Village Road, right where you take a right to turn into Walgreens, it's that piece of property beside Minneke, out there on the very corner. And that was six hundred and some thousand dollars, and they were much. And we was wanting a high-traffic-flow area, trying to catch the Georgia traffic coming to the casino. And, you know, you don't want to be off the beaten path. For example, now that the casino's got their own ABC store, so that's a different situation. But we were trying to catch that traffic still coming out of Georgia. But whenever you spend six hundred thousand dollars on a piece of property, then turn around and put a building down, even if you go by a minimum metal.
Do you have all your inventory in this building, or do you have another building?
No, sir.
All here?
Yes, sir, you're welcome to. Go back to there and look.
It's for women and the others.
This is a mess. I was explaining the reason we got such a mess here, we just got a shipment yesterday, we only get two shipments a month, and it's, it's crazy. But with that large of an inventory, you know, if we got a shipment every week, that'd be different, we only get two a month. So everything's a mess, but we put our main liquor back there in that warehouse, so you, in that warehouse space, so you can go back there and see, it's practically full.
It's not just the lease, I think you guys are triple net, right? So like when an AC unit goes out, ABC board has to pay for it, right? Landlord does not.
That is correct.
Okay?
Anything in-house.
We pay for everything.
And that makes it more painful, like the payment every single month.
Well, we got broke into last year. Last year, last year when this ABC store was.
Last fall, the year ago, last fall.
Yeah. When they came through the roof.
Right there where that camera's at.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. You know, all those, all that expense, we had to pay for all that, except for, I think the owner did.
The owner fixed the roof, the hole in the roof where they cut through it. But anything else which was our cameras, they got.
They cut our camera lines and everything. They didn't get all of them, because that's how they got arrested, we had them on camera. But then we pay all those expenses.
Big up, Ben. Yeah. Yeah, that owner had to pay for everything on top of the.
Yes, sir.
On top of the monthly payment.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Also, going back to having our own building, there was a lot of opposition to that from the people in town. They did not want the town to build a building for the ABC store. And that was one of the big reasons that was not done back then. I wasn't on the board at that time, but I remember all the.
But why? And what was the rationale?
That I don't know, what was the rationale?
Some of it was, and it was a prior council member, so long on the board, had some situations where, I'll give you a good example, down there near the police station, that corner piece of property, there was talk, I don't even know if the town owns that man, right beside, right in front of the fire department, I don't even know who owns that corner.
Town.
All right, but there was talk about trying to get us to get that piece of property. And then the situation you come in is being beside, you may not think that, but being beside a police department, and someone pulling in. I know, I know that's comical for all of us right here, but, I mean, that's reality. They just don't want to pull into that. So we thought, no, we don't want to do that. So we had very, we've looked at tons of properties, pieces of property everywhere, just trying to come up with something. And then whenever the word got out that we were looking, I had every Realtor in Franklin County, you know, and they can, they can do that, and we have to be so far away from a school, you know.
Churches.
And churches, yes.
Churches, yeah.
Sorry, I forgot that. Churches and schools.
You've got a building in the quarters with the state laws, setbacks and such as that. You know, if the town back in this, you can't, you can't correct this now, but back in ninety-three, ninety-four, when the inception of ABC store came about, if the town had invested, let's say at that time, a half million dollars, you would be three more million dollars to the richer right there. So the town of Silver, they bought the ABC store. They get, they were getting, before it went to a Jackson County ABC commission, they were getting like a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Well, Franklin would have been getting that or a lot more by now, had that, had that happened back then, but it didn't. Now the price of buildings has gone up, the price of construction has gone up, the town has some property, not much different places that could offset it. But it's, it's just, you know, it's unreal just how much money that, you know, that we have to pay out. These are some things you might want to look at.
That's my fear though, is that ten years from now, we'll be saying, man, ten years ago, if we had bought that building, we could have, we could fund parks by an extra two-hundred grand a year, whatever it is, you know? But it's, it's tough decisions to make.
It is tough. And I'll be very honest with you, some of y'all, privatization has always been a stick mark for, for a lot of government, you know, is it going to come in? And it was strong. It was strong for years, and it sort of died down. You know, I think it's going to come back strong again, and people are going to talk about privatizing the liquor industry, yes, it is. And I'm only talking from twenty-some years' experience, and the reason for that is because right now, we're in this post-COVID era, where prices have jacked up tremendously on everything, and then you can't get products. And everybody says, well, I can go down to Georgia, to Georgia Line, and I can get something you don't have. And they don't understand that, you know? I say, I'm sorry, I'm just in control. So that's going to bring up privatization.
Yeah, with all of the problems that COVID brought on the state, state ABC commission got locked into some new laws that a few of our local representatives put through. And they put some ridiculous changes to that in there, and we've been fighting it now for about six months. The state doesn't even know what to do. Right now, there is a new bill that was passed last year that says we have to deliver, you know.
To the mixed beverage.
Beverages to all the mixed beverages accounts. We don't have, you know, vehicles to do that with, or manpower to do that with. And that, that's still in contention, because they, they put a loop in there, and it was, we were at that time last year, making caddy was a tier three. Now we're back to a tier two, which allows us an exemption. They don't even know how to handle exemption down there. We've asked and written letters down there asking about being exempt from that now that we're back to a tier two county. And they don't even know how to handle it. They say we may have to go all the way to Raleigh to apply for an exemption.
And if we do have to.
Don't think that's changed, has it?
No, it's not changed.
Have you heard any more?
No, nothing has changed. And if we do have to deliver, it's like Mr. Culpepper said, that's just something else above and beyond that we're going to have to deal with. And you're saying, well, how? I mean, well, we either get a vehicle to deliver that liquor in, I mean, tow it on the back.
Where do you deliver it to?
All mixed beverage accounts, eighteen of them.
You got eighteen of them?
Eighteen.
Like the Highlands do that as well?
They will, nobody's doing it yet. It's not required by law, but it's coming unless you're found exempt, in that status of being a tier.
So if we're tier two, then we're exempt from that requirement.
Yes, sir.
Jackson County is going ahead with it, but Jackson County's got all those mixed beverages accounts up, you know, they even set up an ABC store up in Kansas to cover that. But they've got all those, so it's actually beneficial to them. We've got some people that come in, what, two to three times a week to buy, so that would be two or three deliveries to one person. And that is not simple, you don't walk in there and unload the alcohol, and they pay. There's all kinds of accounting methods that has to be set up to handle that and everything. Then you have to have a driver, and, you know, that driver's got to be able, you know, to make the deliveries and do all of the necessary paperwork.
Most of our deliveries, just, I know that's down the road a bit, but our furthest delivery for Franklin ABC would be Los Felicas down on like Georgia Road. That would be our furthest trip. Everything else is from Tampa. But still, you're talking time for employees, gas, wear and tear on the vehicle, all that kind of stuff, insurance for that. We have tried to keep, just, I know some of the town members may not be aware of this, we, can we find things cheaper? And the answer is yes, just like anybody can in life. For example, I can order paper bags that we have to have, it's an accessory. I can order wholesale through a local company in Tennessee, Virginia, Georgia, wherever, bulk, and I've got room that we can store it, a little bit cheaper than what we're paying right now through a local Dodge packaging. But we're trying to keep our profits and the money local. That's just like our insurance. We are going through Walia, trying to keep it local, as opposed to going away. I mean, we're just trying to put the money right back in. And that's, that's the ABC board's been doing that for, since ninety-four. They just want to try to keep things as local as possible, and we thought that was a good thing to do, so.
We have a tendency to take a look at what we're doing, whether it's the town or county or whatever, and then compare it to other places that are somewhat similar. Do y'all do that to see what your profit and loss and expenses and so forth are? How do you think we stack up here?
Our loss on the bottom, if you can see that on the bottom of that sheet right there that I just gave, very bottom line, we're the lowest of any board in western North Carolina. And we're talking about our shrinkage, our loss, anything going out the door.
What is shrinkage? What do you mean by shrinkage?
That is any breakage, theft, screw-ups on the delivery truck, when you've got fifteen-hundred cases come in, you're going to miss some. But we double-check, triple-check, try to keep every, I mean, we're watching our PZQs, trying to keep things as low as we can. Our biggest component right now is like Mr. Jameson said, our lease. That is our biggest component. I mean, everybody knows that, it's just, it is overwhelming, but I don't know that it's going to get any better. Do I think this rate will come down if we renegotiate to stay here? I do not. But I do think there's a chance it will not go up. And, you know, they want to keep the shopping center full. And there's word that Madcocks is going out, but I don't know.
I, I think you said it eloquently a second ago, when, when you said you're trying to do stuff to give back to the community. I think we are too, and like, we argue and fight over ten thousand dollars here, ten thousand dollars there, like we have, we're building a skate park, and we're trying to help build a skate park, and the budget, I think, is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And we're scrambling and telling these kids they need to raise more money, because we don't have it. I mean, we don't have like fun money to do things with. I mean, we've never had a Parks and Rec Department in the town's history. And so I think that's why we're here, is, is there a way that we can help the ABC board help the town in more ways? Like, is there a way that we can help to where we get more money, so we can do the beautification in the roundabout, so we can do a walkway through the marsh to give something back to the people, so that we can do a skate park, so that maybe we can do a bike park in the future? Like, we're, we're looking for ways, I think, to give back to the community like the town never has in its history. Like, we haven't really done a lot for young folks as a town, and I'm a big advocate for that. And I guess my ultimate question here, and the ultimate thing I want to come out of that meeting, is, is there a way we can help to where there is more ABC profits for us to be able to do things for the people in the town? Like, do we want to have the conversation about building a building again? Will that help? I mean, is it a good idea? I don't know, but I think that's the open kind of communication we need to have, to where, y'all run a good business, a very clean store, but ninety-one hundred dollars, and then you got to pay for maintenance. To me, that's a lot. I mean, that, that would pay for a lot of building, it's just a matter of, do we want to take on something like that for the future of having more money? And I don't know, but let's, let's keep having conversations about it.
We would, we would definitely love to entertain, you know, meetings with the town on that. We tried that when I was on the board, and all of the, six years ago. We thought we had that worked out, and we were going, we had the property located, and it would have, it would really, we would have, it would have really paid itself a good way back by now, had we been able to get that. And the town worked on that, trying to get a loan. But, you know, like I said, that fell through, so the whole idea was kind of dropped at that time. And that was when they were building the, the new Walmart up there. It was going in, and that would have, that would have been right there off Four Lane, would have probably been an ideal location in that time. But the price of property and the price of construction has just gone out of sight. So I was looking last night, going through, and, you know, the construction costs since the date that it's been, that the ABC commission was inception here in nineteen ninety-three, ninety-four, construction cost right now, and this was last year's numbers, not this year's numbers, was over three times that amount. So a million-dollar structure back in ninety-three would be a three-million-dollar structure today, and a piece of property would be no telling how much more than that right now.
The best piece of property that we had, and this was with two of the members that are no longer on the board today, and I apologize if this, Pacatillo wasn't here, she had a prior commitment. But the, was, right, if you go down the Highlands Road right here to the left, and you know where the Pet Store is right there in the curve, where it straightens out, that was the best price that we had on a building.
That was Bill Reed's property.
Correct, yes, that's correct.
We looked at, we looked at that.
The problem with that building, I mean, we, it was a pretty good deal. The problem with that was the structure itself. It was barely giving us enough room downstairs, I don't know if y'all are aware, it's a two-story building, downstairs for a sales floor, and then we were going to have to carry it. And you can't do that, carry the liquor from upstairs to downstairs. And somebody said, well, put in an elevator. I mean, how much would that cost? You know, for that weight? You know, I mean, it's, and then we, it just kept skyrocketing, trying to cut here, cut here, to purchase that one little piece of property, we were done, and it said, oh, we can't do that.
I think even looking at that, the amount and the weight.
Yeah.
Of one, you know, a half gallons, like of alcohol and stuff that weighs, I don't even, at that time, when we looked at that, I don't even think for four, we could have put like bags and spare boxes and stuff up there, but it would have been unsafe, the load bearing on it wasn't just.
Which was not bad.
And you need, you need a place for a tractor-trailer to get in and out.
And that was hard in that curve. So, I mean, that was the best piece of property that we found, and it may be something that we can keep open, like Mr. Culpepper says, to, as a discussion for y'all. I know that's something y'all got to look at, y'all want to undertake that, and look at that down the road, especially, of course, you would have a building if, if the state ever privatized. That would be your, the town's building. So like everything else, what are you going to do with it?
That was another thing that kind of pushed us off back then, because they were right in the middle of that privatization out there. And there are still a lot of state representatives that have friends, I guess, of the alcohol business that want to privatize, because it continues to come up every once in a while.
How many hours a week are y'all open?
Nine AM to nine PM. Of course, you would have a building if, if the state ever privatized. That would be your, the town's building. So like everything else, what are you going to do with it?
That was another thing that kind of pushed us off back then because they were right in the middle of that privatization out there. And there are still a lot of state representatives that have friends, I guess, of the alcohol business that want to privatize because it, it continues to come up every once in a while.
How, how many hours a week are y'all open?
Nine AM to nine PM.
Twelve hours a day?
Monday through Saturday. That is the max by law-
What it is.
-in North Carolina that we can do, and that's what we do. I'll give you an example. Silva, Jackson County ABC Board, most stores. Shh, sorry.
That's the opening music.
Yeah, we're open at thirty to get us going. I thought that was somebody's phone for a second. I said, well, I might go something. The Jackson County ABC Board opens at, at ten AM. This is a college town, folks. Closes at eight.
Nine, nine, Monday through Saturday.
Is us.
Close on Sunday.
Yes, sir. By law.
And there are people that take to operate a store this size, how many hours a week?
How many employees?
How many, how many employees does it take to operate a store?
Well, I, I employ eight. That is full time and part time. But, I mean, you're talking, some of the, only four of them of my employees get thirty-some, upper thirties in hours. The rest are part time where they're only, I've got some that are just supplementing their incomes. You got to have part time here. You got to have that with any, any retail sales. And some of them are only working fifteen, twenty hours. Like I had a guy come in yesterday and pull an eight hour shift, and he'll come back and pull another eight hour later this week, and that's it. He's done it, sixteen hours in a week. And he's just supplementing his income. And then you've got that problem now of the poor workforce in America. Nobody wanting to work. Turnover's been the greatest in this past year that it ever has to save a store.
You know, it was amazing during COVID, you know, when everything was closed, we had to stay open and because of all of the restaurants being closed and that had bars and stuff in, our demand, of course, increased at that time on it. And we had to maintain a, a higher level of service dealing with employees that could get sick and didn't want to come out to work or whatever.
And we thought about, you know, we thought about closing earlier.
Yeah.
Cut back a little bit on overhead type of things, but got to lose some money. Will they get used to it? Yeah, I guess, and start coming earlier if they want to. But, you know, we're trying to be at a convenience, and nine to nine is a convenience. It is, we're in a bad situation where we're at right now with the world. You know how society is today and how crime, and you just look at someone wrong and they turn on you type of situation. And we're out here in the middle of nowhere. And you may not think that, but you, you, you put in a call to Franklin PD, which is rarely done here, but it takes them a little while to get here.
So you have, it's total, did you say eight?
Yes, sir.
Eight employees, and of those, how many are, how many of those are full time?
Uh, four.
And do they have any benefits besides salary?
The fourfold, yes.
Do they get insurance?
They get, they get insurance.
Retirement or anything like that?
Yes, no retirement.
We know retirement, but we do cover the rest. We have to, it's important because this is not something where you bring someone in tomorrow, and they're ready to, to do everything because these employees have to be supervisors and that. And actually, Todd can't stay here, you know, twelve hours a day. And you got to depend on these people, and when you get good people, you want to keep them. And we, we've done that even though they're not on forty hours a week. We do provide those benefits to be able to maintain our workforce.
And all that social background.
And all of them have not had benefits forever.
Yeah.
We, in fact, we've loved them that, that few years trying to keep employees, let's give them some benefits, and maybe they'll stay with us, and he's not having to hire somebody every month or something like that.
And every employee has to be bonded.
Right.
Yeah, so that's the reason we do the background checks. It's, it's not as simple as you might see at a grocery store or convenience store where you can just hire somebody off the street to run a register or to put the candy or the cans on the shelf. Just can't do it. And, you know, we've got to do everything the right way. And our hours of being nine to nine, Mr. Horton, was, I just, I can count the number of times, I've got them written down, just, just in case, but there's less than ten times in the twenty-some years that we've run this business that we have had to close. And that's been, you know, I'm, I'm talking all day close. That's been with the heavy snows or something that we have, and you know how few apart between those are. I guess my dad just instilled in me in the grocery store attitude to open the doors, you know? You can't make a buck unless the doors are open. And I would lay in bed saying, I don't want to open that door today, Dad, but, but I'd have to go do that. So, I, I live here in town, so it's easy for me to get out there. So we, we keep the store up, and do you think people will come when it snows? Go ahead. Go ahead.
Get out, stay warm.
Go ahead. I didn't think we would do the business for snowfall. I had opened years ago, I said, I ain't nobody going to get out in this. Holy cow, is one of our busiest days. But we'll get out.
Don't leave once a month, usually once a month.
Yes, sir. Unless we need to. And, and during privatization time, or let's say, just an example, Fort Worth went out, it's major expense, we call a meeting because so the board can decide what to do.
I apologize for being a few minutes late this morning, but most of my meetings will start at eight o'clock.
Yeah, we, and Mark Moore and Russell Bowling and Pat Patilla just did that years ago when we opened, I think Russell booked, since he was an attorney, is a attorney, wanted to start early in the morning so he could get to his law firm.
Right for his job.
Yeah, and Russell and Pat were retired, so he just needed to get there. So everybody said, let's just do it at eight, and it stayed at eight.
Do you ever have any public, attend your meetings?
We have occasionally back during the days, not with these gentlemen, but back during the days when we were talking about land.
Yeah.
Yeah, realtors were lying, right? Wanting to talk, say, hey, can we show you this? I've got this, and they throw papers down, maps down, and I'm thinking, boy, you know? But nothing as in the form of complaint or nothing like that. Do we have our problems out here? Well, you're going to have your problems with intoxicated individuals at any place, but generally I'll deal with it without getting PD involved in it unless I need, feel like it's going to come back on me, then I'll say, hey, get on out here and deal with this. And there's been a couple that's turned on me, but most of the diehard intoxicated individuals in Franklin have died out.
As elected board members, we're required to take ethics training, and y'all do that too?
They do that.
I'm on every, like, when I left, when I left town board and came out here, the first thing I did was back on, back on, taking ethics training out of Raleigh. Of course, it's online, so it's, you know, it's not as hard. I took a lot of mine, some of the legal-
And that's on every appointment. I don't know how y'all just sit in-
Yeah, we do the same thing for both states for most of us. I thought, I thought it might be required for ABC Board as well.
Any, any state controlled agency, well, there might be required there by law, so. And this is state controlled, it's owned by a local board, but it's under state control.
So how's your, I, I, I may have missed that, if I do, I apologize for missing the first part of it, but how's, how's your, how's your budget process working? Is that working well, or do you have any problems with budgets as far as going through the legal requirements for advertising, publishing, and all that kind of stuff?
We get, we get all of it every year, just like the Town of Franklin gets all of it.
We have to.
We follow those guidelines.
Who?
Town of Franklin gets all of it each year.
Yeah, but who does your audit?
We have them.
Goldsmith, Moleskine Gray out of Asheville, they do eight other ABC boards.
That, that's one of their specialties, ABC?
Yes. And now, could we have done, you know, I was touching base a minute ago about you can run the local with all of our stuff. Could we have gotten a CPA or auditing firm local? Yes, but at the time, Russell Bowling and, and the other board, which was good hindsight, said, let's go out of town impartiality. And, and that's what we've done, and we've stuck with these people, and they've done eight other boards. So it, it's a little different aspect to do an ABC audit than it is just, just audit a business, because there's so many legalities that they've got to fill out, so they don't have to do it.
And let me break on Mr. Mason here, since he's been, done this ever since it opened, never, ever had any problems with all, none. Everything's above board. Some of the local western North Carolina ABC stores, you know, have had problems and actually are in trouble because of, just because of that, so. And some of it is criminal too, so.
Got-
We've been, we've been clean every year.
Close does, it's got investment charges from in-house.
There's always a risk. Anytime you're dealing in, in retail, especially, some people don't want to use their checkbook or their credit card, and when they come in here to buy something, there's all like cash transactions, I'm sure. And so it, I don't care what organization you're with, when you have a lot of cash transactions, there's always a, a threat or a possibility of, of somebody out within the organization figuring out a way to sidetrack some of that stuff, so.
I worry some just on security here, because we were really worried when bile was closed. We actually entertained the thought of maybe closing early before it got dark, just because there wasn't any, any activity out here that-
All the businesses closed around there.
Yeah, but now that we've got a new store in down there that has, brings a lot of people in, and there's a lot of people in the parking lot, and the owners put in quite a bit of money to upgrade all the parking lot lights, we felt a little bit more secure. We're sitting out here on the end at nighttime, and the only store that's open on this end, so.
But there you go again, and Mr. Culpepper touched on that. They put in that expense of the lights, and you know where that's going to go. It's going to come back upon the tenants. It's called common area maintenance charges is what it's called.
You have to pay your own utilities as well, and this is where you're at.
We pay, we pay everything.
I've approached the town about knocking off the water and sewer, but they won't do that, so.
Not only won't we can't.
No, we, we do-
We cannot.
We, we pay everything.
If you apply for one of these hardship cases like the owner of the cares, I just don't like to postpone it for a while, but one of the things that we're required to do, and I'll get Sarah, or anybody else's, when it comes to handling money for the town, we're required by the budget fiscal control act, to pay the deposits if we have money over a certain amount. Y'all have to follow through the same kind of guidelines.
We're required by law in North Carolina to make a deposit every single day that the bank is open. You know, when holidays, banks are closed, Easter Monday and all this kind of stuff, then we have to go the next day. But, yeah, we're required. I used, when we started opening up, we used to have Franklin PD escorts. That became a problem. I could call for that and, or set a time, and that would pass quickly. So I said, I'll just go.
Who do you bank with?
Currently it is, well, we try to keep it local. Russ Gale, when he was at, was the first union at the time on Main Street, and he was the one that gave us the initial loan to get started here when nobody else would, so we tried to keep things local. We went to Macon Bank, then it went to Integra, and then it's gone for Citizens, and we're still there. There are no great rates.
No, not anymore.
No, sir.
We do, we still keep a small account.
Yes. The reason we do that, we keep a small savings account, it's very minimal, at this bank up here where you turn into across from KFC, and I hear they're changing names.
It used to be Integra, actually when it was Integra, because it allowed Todd to quickly go up and get, you know, get change and stuff that he might need for the register here. But it's, it's become difficult to deal with any bank now, so.
Are you able to invest in the idle funds? Do I have any investments?
The account that we've got at this bank up here beside Kmore, Kentucky Fried Chicken is a CD, so we are investing back in that with that, those funds that we've got, which is very minimal. But it's, that, we're not doing anything else. I mean, there's things that I've, you know, thinking, you know, nowadays, credit cards, you can do that charge back to the customer. Are y'all, y'all putting out that in all various places today? They're charging that right back. I approached the commission, you know, are we able to do that as a board? And of course, no, we're not able to do that. So, I mean, we're trying to do everything we can to cut back on costs.
Our credit card cost is really-
I think it's at like fifty thousand a year here, something like that.
Yes.
And you'd think if you dealt with a bank, they would provide that service too.
Right.
When we continue to check with different banks, trying to save money.
Yeah, periodically I'll, I'll touch base, send a letter to them, say, would you like to give us a proposal? And they just, nothing.
What do they charge a percentage on every transaction or, or a flat amount for transactions? How do they do that on your credit cards?
It is a percentage. And it is, and, and it's small, I mean, I mean, it's still significant when you think about it, but we've tried to, that's the reason I brought up that charge back, you know, and put it right back on the customer, but it's not, I know there's a lot of cash, but y'all have seen the monthly, or if you haven't, you know, the town gets a copy of our monthly credit card versus cash, and it's more than double. People use those cards, they're debit, credit cards, all the same.
It's usually two and a half percent.
Right, is that about right?
Yeah. Ours is right at two.
Are you, have to follow, does the state pay how much you can charge per bottle or container?
Yeah, I cannot increase.
You don't have any adjustments as well?
We don't have any authority to change anything. The only thing, the only thing we can do to make more money is lay people off, which is not good in this time of market. Lay people off or find another building. You can't cut electricity, you can't cut waters, you can't get discounts on water and sewer.
All prices are fixed. Meaning if, if there's something out there, I can't reduce the price to get rid of it.
The fixed price, they get a, they get a case or a half a case or something like that of some really expensive liquor that sells for like four hundred dollars, but I think you can only price it at ninety bucks, right, or something like that?
And it's per bottle, everything's per bottle. I don't know if y'all familiar, I mean, my, my father ran a grocery store, home, home owned grocery store. And if someone would come in the store and say, hey, I want to purchase a case of something or two cases of this, yeah, and say, yeah, we'll give you twenty percent discount or thirty percent discount, I mean, still making a little bit, but you can't do that. And people tell me, oh, I can go down here to the Georgia Line and they'll give me a case for X amount. I want to chug the Georgia Line, but I mean, there's nothing I can do about that.
Nowadays, man, I go down there with the price of gas.
Well, that's true. Five dollars a gallon.
Yeah, it's the island, all the house in South Carolina as well as up here, and this is the first time I've been down there eight years, the first time in eight years that the price of gas was the same in all three states. It's just unreal value, they say.
And we can't, I'm sure Mr. Kimsey's got problems getting items there at your business.
It's true.
Yeah, a little, that same problem we're having. You know, things that I wouldn't think would be a problem, and I, we just can't get it.
Have y'all looked at other retail space to lease? We were doing the math on the square footage, and it's a buck forty a squared foot, which would be reasonable if you weren't paying for your own utilities-
Correct.
-and maintenance.
Well, we've looked at that over the years. Every, every few board members, we talk about different places, like when there was the New Eagles open up out there. You know, we looked at the possibility out there, so.
And you don't want one, so.
No.
There's only three places that we have looked to continue a lease, so to speak, and that was at the New Eagles, and they didn't want us out there. They said whoever that was at the time didn't want alcohol out there, you know, ABC stores, so to speak. Now they're begging us because they can't lease those buildings. But, but we know how the parking and the traffic flows down there, and that would be a nightmare. We didn't think of that at the time. Miles Gregory's place out here in Kmore and the old Walmart. Now, the rest of the places, sir, to answer your question, is we were looking to purchase, you know, trying to, trying to either renovate something or build or something of that nature. Those were the only locations for lease situations that we looked at. And, you know, it's, it's tough, because it's like Mr. Jameson said, when you decide you're going to find something to go to, you know, you're going to spend astronomical[1678.88] you know, you're going to spend astronomical amount of money to go get it set up. It's not as easy as you think, like this shelving is built to spec. And here, we're going to, if you're going to get a place, we're either going to have to start anew and get the shelving brought in for spec, or we're going to have to build a two-spec.
With the two 30-hour people, is that by their choice that they don't want to work 40 hours or?
Well, just trying to keep hours, they want to work eight hours a day and we just kept it down to 38. Yeah, we could, but.
Oh, did you say 38? I thought you said 30.
No, no, 38, they're roughly 38 hours.
Okay, right.
They're just a little bit less than 40. And then the part-time handle is very minimal hours, just to help unload a truck, cover at night, cover on weekends. We've got to have those time.
So, the extra three people that are listed on the website, are they just part-time or?
Yes.
Okay. Because there's 11 on the website, so I just wanted to.
Well, I hadn't updated that since COVID struck. I haven't done anything with that.
We're actually down from there.
Yeah, we had people leaving left and right, you know, because they thought they could do better or the government was giving away the money.
I've got one more question, then I've got to head on for something else, but what would an agreement look like with the town and the ABC board?
Well, in talking to our CPA, they do, the other ABC boards that they do, Goldsmith, Moleskine Gray says they have that agreement. They said, they never did ask if we did, and we never did say we did. You know, it was just an understanding that we had years ago, and so we just continued that path. The agreement can be whatever the town and the ABC board wants to put in there. If there's a dollar figure that y'all would like to see, you can bring it to this ABC board and they can tell you what they can do. There is little, some room, I mean, if you think that you're going to get $200,000, then.
We know better than.
Okay, well, that ain't going to happen. I'm just, just telling you that it ain't going to happen. But if, if you think that you're going to, that we can, there is room where we can get more. There just needs to be that understanding and agreement that if we became financially strapped or needed something.
The town would pitch in.
The town would, it would pitch in, whether it be help us out or we reduce those funds.
Do you think that would be like the same figure every year or would fluctuate based on?
Depending on the agreement, whatever we decided, whatever the town would agree to.
It'd just be basically a memorandum of understanding that says that the town will do this and the ABC board will do this.
Yes.
You agree on.
That's great.
On any formulas or any percentages or any reports that have to be generated or, or any hours or, anything that changes the operation that would be at the discussion. There's probably some, some forms out there that people are using that you could probably take a look at and.
Our CPA, will, will they provide us with something that they use in other, with other ABC stores and CDs and stuff?
I think, Claude, I don't think $200,000 is realistic right now, but I think with some planning and some dialogue between these two boards, $200, $250,000 is absolutely possible in the future. It may be a few years down the road, but that is something that, that could happen. I mean, I know that Ms. Patillo has told us before that, you know, the ABC board is not a piggy bank for the town, and I understand that y'all are independent, you need to run a good store, but, I mean, it behooves both of our boards for y'all to give the town money to do better things, and y'all still run the ABC store really well. And I think we need to see how we can help you do that for a more economical price so that whatever extra money you have, we're not giving $9,100 to a landlord that lives out of town. We're, we're saving, we're saving you money so that we can do something with the money that benefits the town other than just paying a landlord exorbitant fees or what I consider exorbitant, maybe market rate, I don't know, but I hear $9,100 and as a businessman like that, I start freaking out about that kind of, that kind of.
Twenty plus years ago, if the town had become our landlord at that time, you know, a high $1 million investment then would have brought the town additional $3 million by now.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
So, the town wants to look at that, we would entertain that. If you'd like to be our landlord and, you know, get a piece of property and put a building in, we would love that. If that $1,000 a year that we're paying to a, to a landlord, that $100,000 would go to the town.
And I want to add this, if you all ever decided to start going that route, please talk to this man. Don't just put up something and it not be what's really needed for the ABC store. When you walk in this store, and I don't know how many have been to that many liquor stores, ABC store, it's a nice pleasant place to walk into. You've got plenty of room, you've got plenty of, to do what you want, need to do with. So, consider that and work with him, but he, he ought to know better than anybody what size store we need, what we need here, what we need there in the store because he's been in it much longer than any of us, so.
Been in the sense they opened the doors the first day, I guess, like.
Yeah, even, even to the point that the state ABC commission are continually calling this store, asking Todd to help out with those stores, which he has. We've been helping, I mean, we helped with Cherokee and Cherokee Travel.
That's true.
But he's gone over and, and helped out stores in western North Carolina, get organized. And the commission recognizes this store so much, they're continually calling him to ask him to assist in setting up new stores and stuff.
I mean, I don't, I'm just looking around the room and I don't see a lot of faces that come in here, you know? And even if I did, even if I did, I'm going to say, "No, I've never seen you, never seen you."
Yeah, well, you're. I'll mention this, Todd, I knew, I knew your dad, he was actually county commissioner when I first came to town in 1985. But a former mayor, I won't mention the name of the town, used to, used to joke, and he said, "I don't know what this world is coming to." He said, "I saw two paths to speak to each other in the ABC store."
That's not the truth. But if you go to other ABC stores, and I'm sure, Mr. Pepper, you've been, you've seen or been to, most of them are pretty dark and dreary.
They are, and very small.
Very small, and, and they don't want to broaden their horizons, they think, you can't sell it unless you got it, is, is what I was instilling in years ago. But I try to make it bright, spacious, clean, and, I mean, I'd go to our neighboring ABC houses, I'd sit down there, it's pretty dark and dreary.
Y'all do a monthly report, financial report, public law report?
Before you, I just want to apologize that I have to leave.
That's okay.
But I used to sell beans and taters to your dad.
I know, I know. Thank you, I appreciate you telling me. It's good to see you.
You get, you get a monthly report, probably the same report that the board members do.
You're the finance, are you the, who's the finance?
Let me get it.
Because there has been, there has been talk before. That's, that's a move. There's been talk before about us moving and just past council members. They've, they've got people that, that rent places and they want to put it in a much smaller place. We got, there's lots of things to think about, location, size, exactly what you need to put in there, where it needs to be and all that. And I said, "This man will know more than anybody, so please, if you do go that route."
This is Will and Connor. She's been born and raised, in 94, I was hired as a manager by the three ABC members. And then she was hired as the assistant manager. And if you've not seen her here, you've probably seen her at Walmart or something like that. She is the finance officer for the board, and she does the profit boss stuff and all, and the books and all this kind of stuff. And answering, trying to answer your question.
Well, that'd be good, and I don't know how that works, but, and I've been on the board for like two years now, and this is the first time we've ever actually done anything except make performance or reform to the board that I've been aware of. It would be good, I think, if we could schedule sometime, I don't know how often you need to do it sometimes during the year to do a general report, and I can, one of our boardmates would say, you know, "This is what we're doing. This is how much money we made, this is where it goes." Because a lot of folks don't know the things that are required as far as taxes and appropriations for different.
A lot of people do not.
They don't know, so it'd be a good idea if we had sometime during the year, I don't know how often we want to do that, but at least sometime during the year to do some kind of a in-person report to the.
We used to do that.
Did you?
Believe it or not, when I was on town, Todd would come at the end of the year to the, to the town meetings and give a report, somewhere, you know, it's, this is the type of report he would give, shows where all the money goes and how much we got and what our expenses are. And that was done, and then the last several years prior to COVID, the town set up several meetings with us and canceled them all. So, I mean, if the town did go to do that, but the meetings were canceled, so, you know, we didn't, never had any.
Well, we promised not to cancel on you, we discussed another time, but I think it'd be good for us all to be able to, to, to tell the public what's going on because this is an enterprise and it does provide some money for different aspects of the community. A lot of people don't know that the five cents a bottle or 5.1 cent, whatever it is now, goes to alcohol rehabilitation. Most people don't even know that. I wouldn't know it if I hadn't already worked in local government, but there are things like that that need to be aware of. And because if you decide to do something like build a new building or whatever it is, and people are going to make their decision on the information they have. If they don't have good information, then they're probably not looking for a good decision. So, it's good that keeps that communication, I think, open and available for not just between us, but the general public who's interested in all that's going on.
I have a question for y'all for the board. When do you plan on hiring the enforcement officer?
Last July.
That is our, that is our ABC officer. That officer works with us here and provides the force.
Right, and as the code enforcement officer is hired, the captain at the police department is the ABC officer.
Yeah.
So, if there's.
And that captain just resigned too.
He did just retire.
Retired.
The police department.
And then the gentleman just took his.
Is retired this month or something.
It's one after the other.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're trying and they've done everything they can. It's just hard to find somebody who willing to go out and be a court, a code enforcement officer because you don't win friends and influence people by telling people what they have to do and what they can't do. But we've got ordinances that have to be, and you know that because you're on the board for a while. We have ordinances that have to be complied with, and sometimes you have to give them some bad news and they're not always happy to hear that, but, and we were hoping to be able to get somebody with some law enforcement background to be able to have some other tools as far as enforcement. But that has not proven out to be possible. We have trouble just getting policemen, volunteer to come to work with the, with the town and say, "We're doing some incentives on that." But it's hard to get somebody to do that, so we're, we're still looking, and we talked about this at our retreat, instead of just saying, "We've got to have somebody with law enforcement officer's training." We're, we're hopefully going to get somebody who could be a code enforcement officer. And eventually, if they want to become, you know, a.
Police officer.
Police officer, they can do that along the same lines, but we really need to get somebody on board. And if you know anybody out there who would like to come to work for the town of Franklin in code enforcement, it's a great place to work and there's some good people there. And all we're trying to do is make sure we can do everything within our power to make Franklin the cleanest, prettiest, safest place to live in this part of the world. That's my advertisement.
Good commercial.
Get a fun place to live.
Always have a good liquor store, is it?
Mr. Orton, did you want us to follow up or me to follow up with our CPA about getting a form or an agreement from a sample or two?
If you, if you could do that and communicate with our town manager, I think she'd be able to connect the dots with all of us.
At least maybe see, yeah, see an example of one, so we even know what it, you know, contains.
And there is room for, where we can, whether it be a set figure or go on profit ratio, we can do that if that's what you want to do, but we just need to be sure that we have the understanding that if something happens with the conditions that we're still in here, you know, where we have this overhead that we need to take.
At least, at least one yearly report and personal report. When you finish, your fiscal year runs the same as ours, July 1st to June 30th. Sometime at the end, before the end of your fiscal year, when you have your numbers and your audits and so forth, it'd probably be a good time then to give a recap of the year, the, how, how things have gone over the last year and what the money has been used for and all that kind of stuff, so. So, hopefully, maybe sometime in, if not sooner than this, by July, we could probably get a, do a joint meeting or whatever.
Good. Glad.
That's no problem.
Glad. We appreciate y'all coming. Thank you, and we appreciate the support y'all always given us. I mean, it's, we just never really asked for it.
We'll work as a board, we'll, we'll go back through and look at our figures and our dollars over the last several years and what we've got. Like I said, we have very little in stages up there, which is like an emergency fund. But then we look at that to see what we, what we might do to contribute more, so.
Thank you, I appreciate y'all coming. Where are all of these chairs?